To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA 10:4, the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this duly and regularly scheduled meeting, the Jackson Township Board of Adjustment has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Camello is absent. Ms. Russell is absent. Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Present.
All right, Mr. Najarian, can I make a general announcement for the members of the public or those folks waiting to be heard? So as you can see, particularly for any new application, the board is going to be constituted of six members. That is not a full board. You have the right to ask for a full board to be heard. So as you come up, if you want to proceed, certainly you're permitted to do so. But if you choose not to, as of right, we would have to give you your adjournment. I just want to make that clear. Sorry, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
No problem. Okay, do we have approvals for resolutions? No resolution. How about the minutes, approval per minute?
Nope.
I got two vouchers in front of me. I got one for 150 and one for 250. The motion and the second.
Move the paperwork out.
And a motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yeah.
Ms. Bradley? Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes. Okay, any announcements?
You know what, Mr. Chairman, not at this time, though I don't want to just hit Mr. Pfeffer as he's walking in, but perhaps what we can do is do the first application and then flip back to him. You can get yourself settled. No, 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 get yourself settled.
Okay. And no matter the discussion, no administration. Okay, so I need the professionals to be sworn in, please.
Each of you kindly raise your right hand. Each of you kindly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Yes. Starting from Mr. Hill, can you introduce yourself?
Evan Hill, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Jeffrey Paporo, Zoning Officer.
Frank Niskovich, Board Traffic Engineer.
Thank you all. Okay, so we've got the first application, Carolyn and John Carpenter III. Please come forward. And you both be sworn in if you're going to make testimony.
Yes, we both end once and then you can go from there. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Carpenter, for raising your hand. Each of you silently swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you wish to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay. When you're speaking, it's important because the acoustics here are not just bad, they're awful. If you can try to focus on speaking into the mic, can... Can... He's right, though. So if each of you can just give us your names and somebody spell your last, your address, please.
Carolyn Carpenter, 14 Berwin Lane in Jackson.
John Carpenter, 14 Berwin Lane in Jackson.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Excellent. So tell us a little bit about what you want to do. I know that you're asking for a detached garage, right?
Yes.
How big is that garage going to be?
It's going to be 18 by 24 by 10, 10 and 1/2 foot high.
And it's an undersized lot, land intended?
Yes.
In an R3 zone?
Correct.
Do you want to make any testimony? Tell us why. You need to be a garage?
We need an area for rough items to store things.
Is this garage going to have any electricity, gas, water running out through it?
It probably will have electric.
Okay. Any other questions from board members?
If I may, through the chair. With regards to the construction of the building, it's a stock pole barn. You described it as a construction, the materials used?
Yes, it's going to be a pioneer pole barn. It's going to be wooden poles inside, wooden rafters, and then aluminum corrugated on the outside.
What type of... That's the word I'm looking for. Not the ground, but will it be paved? I mean, will it be paved?
No, it'll eventually be concrete in the building.
And you're also proposing electricity to go to the structure?
Yeah, so it would be electric and concrete.
If I could, can you testify with regard to the location of the pole barn? You know, the reason you're here is because you're within 10 feet of the property line. Why does it specifically have to be there? Can it be moved?
So if we move it, our well is obviously in the backyard as well, and it would be literally like in the middle of our backyard over top of our well.
And your well is located, as per your diagram, in the middle of your yard, correct?
It's not in the mid... It's a little bit off-center. It's not directly in the middle, but it's close to the middle.
And as per the diagram, how would you access the pole barn from, say, the front of the property? You intend to have a paved surface going to the structure?
No, just from the driveway. And then I can drive from the driveway right through the back fence that's there to the backyard.
And again, I'm sorry, the intended use is the utility use for the property?
What's that?
I'm sorry?
The intended use of the pole barn?
For rough storage of items.
Items, specific use for the property?
My lawnmowers, you know, yard equipment.
Quad.
Quad. Personal, not commercial.
Yeah, correct.
Yes.
And again, just going back to 10 feet, you're stuck in that position.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. No more. Chair.
Anybody else to call?
Through the chair. I'm looking at the plan of survey done by Leaper Land Group LLC. I don't see your names on it, but I see the names of Sharon Pine and her... Who is Sharon Pine?
She was the previous owner that we bought from.
So there's no updated or newer survey. You're relying upon an old survey. Is that right?
Yeah, I believe she only owned the house for three years.
Correct.
And then we purchased it, and it allowed us to use the survey that she used to buy the house.
As you look at the misapplying survey, and as to what is there now, is it same same or has it changed? For instance, as I'm facing your house from Berwin Lane, and I go down the left side property line, I see two sheds. I see a notation for six-foot solid fence and a four-foot chain link fence. And then I see, looks like a wooden deck off the back of the property. Are those things still there?
Yes, it's exactly the same.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, folks. How long do you own the property now?
In April of 2018, we purchased the house.
So when you purchased the property, the sheds were there?
Correct.
The playground was there?
Correct.
The fences were there?
There was no playground.
Okay. So the playground's gone?
Yeah, she must have took it down. We didn't take it down. It wasn't there when we bought the house.
You, at no time since you purchased the property, owned property to either side of you, have you?
No.
Okay. Because then we'd ask you, can fix some of the variances that are out there by using some of the property to either side of you. With regards to the fence, could you sort of take your time, start from the left side of the house, and just walk us around the property? Because this map, that was submitted, shows sort of two pieces of information. So could you just sort of clockwise walk us around what fencing exists on the property? And if you're changing it, what you're proposing it to do? So if you started from the left side of the house, went out to the property line, what's out there now?
There's a... It's a stock, I guess, a stockade.
Six-foot high?
Yeah.
And staying?
Yes.
As I go down...
I'm sorry. Can you speak into the microphone so we can hear you? I'm sorry.
So it's a stockade, six-foot fence?
And then as I go down the left side property line, what's down there?
That is chain link fence.
Okay, what size is it?
I believe it's six foot as well.
And does that go all the way to the back of the property?
It doesn't. No, it stopped. So it doesn't go all the way to the back. I own, we own a little bit past the chain link fence.
Okay.
So it goes, it goes probably, I don't know the footage, but it goes almost to the end of our property down that side, and then it makes a right-hand turn and goes across the back.
It starts coming around to the right-hand side?
Yes.
And what fence exists along the right-hand property line?
That would be a six-foot-high stockade as well.
And that's going to stay?
That's going to stay.
And then when I come across where the stone driveway ends, that's also a six-foot stockade, and that's going to stay?
Yes.
You're going to put a gate or something in it so you can get through it?
There is a gate already.
Okay. With regards to the two existing sheds, you indicated that they were there when you bought the property?
Yes, they were.
They're going to be used for personal reasons? You're not going to run a business or store commercial things out there?
No.
Same thing with the new pole barn?
That's correct.
For personal, you're not going to run a business or commercial vehicles out there?
No.
I think that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just have one question. You indicated that the purpose of the pole barn is to store your own equipment for landscaping at home, right? Anything else?
Yes, no, that's it. I mean, quads, it's just for personal use. I do all my own, you know, I change oil in my car, her car. It's kind of hard to do that in a gravel driveway. So just a place that I can do household stuff.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody want to speak for or against this application? I'm not seeing anybody coming forward. I'm on a closed public session. Okay, board members, have we heard enough documentation here to make a decision?
Given the testimony, the hardship I see here with regards to being within the 10-foot property line is due to the location of their wellhead. And that being said, I can appreciate the situation and put forth a motion to approve the application.
I'll need a second.
Second.
We have motion and a second roll call.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes, you have your garage.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. Pfeffer, and for members of the public, we're going to address application number six.
Mr. Pfeffer, you're at...
Thank you. So regarding application number six, your math is as good as mine. We've had two unexpected little situations with board members, personal members. So you only have five people right now, qualified members. That's not sufficient for you to move forward. I know Ms. Bradley hasn't had the opportunity to review the transcripts or listen to the tape, so that would only be six in any event. However, before we discuss moving the case, I think we have sufficient folks here to at least engage in a brief discussion, which is why I want you to get settled first. So we appreciate, on behalf of the board, I can talk about this, the moves the applicant has made to acquire the other lot, et cetera. But in reviewing the notice with our engineer, planner, and traffic engineer, and I'm sure you've read the reports, there's references made, and we discussed this at the last hearing. Now that it's a consolid... If the proposal is to consolidate the lot, it creates a potential for a D1 variance, quite frankly. And the notice doesn't have any mention at all about what the applicant proposes to do with that property. It's so subject, the ultimate desire of the applicant is so intricately tied into that determination. It's at least a recommendation of our professionals, and I open this up to the board, that in this particular circumstance, this is not really an app... Not really, it is not. I'll speak in the affirmative. There's not an application that ought to be bifurcated. Moreover, it's an application that the applicant respectfully needs to make a determination about what to do, what it chooses to do or call that residence, you know, what activity. Does it changes the traffic count? It changes where parking potentially could be on the site, how it's going to be used. So we touched on it briefly at the last hearing, but that was through, you know, through the chairman to the board, and I think opening up maybe to the board for comment as well. So you hear, ultimately, they're the ones who have to make the decision. But I think it would behoove everyone for the applicant to make a choice and present that choice, and then notice for that choice. Because I very rarely, you've been here long enough to know, generally speaking, my position on notice has been that the, it's the applicant's, it's the applicant's burden, it's the applicant's risk. The board is here, they're volunteers, as long as folks understand that. In this particular case, I respectfully, I don't, about myself, I guess, I do not believe I would be doing my job properly to permit the application to go forward. I had the opportunity to review the notice, and there's no call out of that second, of that residence, not the second, I apologize, the second residence. I think the applicant, in our opinion at least, pointing to the professionals, you haven't heard from the board yet, I think the applicant needs to make a choice. But through the chair, I turn that over to the board, maybe, for some discussion to guide the applicant?
Paul? If I may, Mr. Pfeffer, you've heard me on a number of occasions on these various bifurcated applications. I'm not generally in favor of the bifurcated application. I know the purpose of the bifurcation is to avoid extra expense for purposes of site plan, but I'm sure you're familiar with the House of Fire case. It's one of those classic cases that essentially says, we shouldn't bifurcate these types of cases when there are issues that may impact the overall safety, the negative aspects of the application. I understand it's inherently beneficial use. I understand that it's a permitted conditional use. I understand that the positive criteria is generally acceptable. You've still got the negatives here. And I had suggested from day one that the applicant should start looking at a subdivision on this property to make the property a little larger, because there was a encroachment there. And I recognize that there was an easement that was given to the property owner for purposes of, of course, the house goes over onto the adjoining property. But my position at the time was, that was an easement to operate a, to maintain a residence, not a commercial type of use. And I suggested that you try to get the subdivision so you can create a new property line that eliminates that kind of a problem. My concern was that if this board, at least my personal concern, that if we were to grant your application for the conditional use variance, the way it was originally submitted, we'd be granting some relief to the second property, which was a residence. And it would be very hard-pressed for that property owner, the hard-presses board, to deny that property owner a request for some type of commercial use or something of that nature because of what was granted previously. So that I was concerned with initially. When you get into that type of thing, now we're talking about parking, we're talking about backup of parking onto the street. There was testimony, one of the reasons for the churches, because, for the synagogue is because congregants walk from home to the residence, and, you know, a mile may be too long to do it, whatever it was, whatever the discussion was at the time, I don't remember the numbers. But I was concerned about the safety issues in the parking, only because there was, I know you can't drive to the synagogue on certain days, but if I'm correct, but there was also testimony from day one that there were other functions that would be performed on the property, which would create a parking issue backing up onto the street, which creates a problem. And for me, that was a problem with not bifurcating this application, because what happens then is when you go to site plan, you're going to start assuming it gets approved, you're going to site plan. The problem that I had was that, and still have, is that the issues of safety that would, that would create a problem would effectively end up denying approval already granted. And essentially, you'd have to prove the negative criteria twice, and, but for two separate reasons, obviously. So I strongly recommend that if, from my vote, I would like to see a non-bifurcated application of site plan. I think the parking is going to be important. I think the issue of backing onto the road is going to be an issue. I think about walking on the street in that area where there's sidewalks is going to be an issue. And we can't make those determinations based on what we have now. We don't even have a concept in that regard.
So if I could just address, there's a lot that was just said between Mr. Gertner and Mr. Hurley. Few things. So everything you guys have said, this applicant has heard loud and clear, and they've been working diligently to resolve these issues. So to address first was Hurley, and then I'll get to Mr. Gertner. At the last hearing, or one of the last hearings, you had, everything you said, you, it's exactly what you said to us. We went, we made sure to get the properties under contract, we passed the contingency phase. It's due to close around the end of the year or earlier. So that's happening. We have, obviously, as part of the application, we would be consolidating the lots. By doing so, all of your other concerns, which were 100% on point, are gone. Those aren't even a discussion anymore. We had, you also had recommended to us the last hearing that we prepare, the same comments, the cost of doing a full site plan, it may be burdensome, but that we can at least provide something so the board can know what this is going to look like. We did create that plan and have provided to the board. There was an issue, I believe, with FedEx, that it didn't get, the exhibit didn't get to the board within 10 days, but it's my position, and we'll deal with that. We won't be dealing with it anyway.
At this point, it's moot.
Correct. It's moot. But we did, I want the board to really understand, this applicant did take the time and energy to do all that. On that plan, it shows everything that, more or less, what you were asking for. How is the parking going to work? Where is it going to be? Drainage? We show a rain garden. The one thing, and the main thing is that it shows that the property line being removed. What it doesn't show, which we were going to get to in testimony, is the removal of many of those other structures that are called out for variances, some sheds, the pool. A lot of those items are being removed, so that that's not really going to be an issue from our standpoint. As far as doing a full site plan, I mean, I will speak with my client and explain to him loud and clear what the board's concerns are, but I want the board to know that we really did work to give you everything but for doing a full-blown site plan.
Well, I do have one other problem, though, Mr. Gertner mentioned. Now, with what I understand your plan to be, now we have two principal buildings, and you're creating a variance, I think, for the second lot, which has the house on it, has the other home on it, right? And has that been properly noticed? I don't want to go through this whole thing and come back and say, you got improper notice. I want you to know that in advance. I think Mr. Gertner absolutely brought it forth.
And I understand that. And either way, whatever we decide, it's not going to be an issue tonight, as we don't have enough members. So I will, you know, speak with the client, figure out what is needed to do, the balance of this, again, I'll call it concept site plan, which was what we thought, you know, the board wanted to see, versus doing a full-blown site plan. I do just, I have to say on the record, just, there are other factors that cause, I know this, not before this board. And to do the full site plan will take some time. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say it's going to take overly long. I do have to check with the engineer to see.
Is the engineer here tonight?
No, but I could step out and call the, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Wayne, is he here yet? He will be here. He was, okay, I mean, we were number six, that's why he...
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's going to be overly long.
No, no, no. Hang on. So I don't, I don't know, Mr., if any guys want to pipe in. I just, from my perspective, as the board's attorney, to use the straight vernacular, you've got to make a call as to what you want to do with that other structure, and then you have to notice the public as to what you want to do with it. You can't, it just can't be left open as any and all variances. It's staring right in front of us that it's there. You can't miss it. It's your choice. We're to listen neutrally to the determination. Mr. Hill?
So I think for clarity's sake, currently, what the board has in front of it, the most recent plan that was submitted, I would consider that a variance plan and nothing more than that. It graphically depicts where certain things are proposed, but there's no engineering detail regarding grading and drainage. There's no engineering detail regarding stormwater management and so on. There's also no indications on the plans of what is going to be, what is proposed to be demolished versus what maybe, what other areas of the site could be developed. So what we have now is a variance plan. What we also have right now is just a variance application. So I think, I think the board may want to provide some direction to the applicant as far as, or maybe clarify the direction to the applicant as far as, is what's submitted, are you comfortable with that, or are you going to require a site plan application to move forward?
Well, if I may, and again, board disagree, then my feel, our feeling from a professional vantage point, although we would need consensus of those folks here, is that I think the board would like to see a full site plan so that everyone understands, including the public, quite frankly, how that site is going to work in totality. What's your vision? And given the fact that it appears, as of now, that the, well, a lot of the, some of the other structures will be gone based on what you submitted, as we sit here today, it appears that other property is going to be there. So I think folks got to know, you got two principles, two structures. I won't even get into principal, accessory, whatever. Leave that to you. But there's drainage, there's parking, there's all these other circulation, both vehicular and pedestrian. It all needs to be worked out. And they're so entwined, in my opinion, and I still see no major objections from any board members on this comment, that you really ought to submit that site plan so that everything's on the table, the board sees it in one unified piece, the public sees it in one unified piece, so everyone knows what your vision is.
I'm going to have to agree with the professionals. Are you going to pull your application?
No, he's not. No, 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 no. So, and seeing the fact that he's not pulling, because at the end of the day, while this discussion would have had to have been had, sorry for the triple, that poor English, at the end of the day, we need, the board needs to recognize and the public that it would not have moved forward in any of that, because we only have five eligible folks here. So he's not pulling the application, but we're using the opportunity wisely to inform the applicant of the desires of the board, and quite frankly, to create a full record of what they're, what the applicant is actually asking for. Is Mr. McFarland? I apologize. I don't remember who's the engineer off the top.
New lines, Mr. Lines. I do have, Christine was here, well, is the planner.
So we can do this, if it's okay, before we formally carry it? Let's, let's go, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, let's go to, if I may, let's go to application number...
I'd rather just say, I'd rather just do this. I hear the board loud and clear. Even if they're here, I have to have a conversation with the client. It's not going to be a two-minute conversation. I know that, I hear the board's comments, and we have to discuss them. Timing also, because I believe we do a full site plan, I have to do a full traffic report. There's a lot of factors into this stuff. So we'll carry it tonight. So we'll carry it tonight. I don't know what meeting you want to carry it to. Well, if you want me to, I want to make a suggestion, we, no matter what, we have to renotice.
That's right.
That that's not a problem. So I don't necessarily need a date, it's up to you if you say you want to put on a date. I, what I would like to tell the board is that I'll be back here at the next meeting in two weeks, right, in two weeks. Sorry, I'm just looking at the calendar, at the 20th. If you allow me the two weeks to come back to the board, not to be heard, just to tell the board what we plan on doing, so we can figure out the timing.
So let me make the announcement. So for members of the public, the applicant who are here regarding application number six, use variance 3316, block 6401, lots 22 and 21, W S N P. That matter will be carried to a date to be determined at the next board meeting. It'll be a matter of discussion for Matt, for the public's knowledge that to whatever final date it is carried, the applicant must renotice.
Yes.
So we're making it, so just so the public understands, the board will make an announcement at the next meeting. That announcement will include the necessity of the applicant to renotice. One of, again, to try to do my best to not speak lawyeries and to speak in English. The, what the applicant, as I understand it, is going to determine is whether or not, how far it's going to take the board's request and suggestion. Depending on that, we'll be able to determine how long the applicant would need to, if it goes the whole boat, site plan, traffic and the like.
Exactly.
Help me out if I made a mistake.
No, so.
And you're, and you're willing to waive.
And Mr. Pfeffer, I'm just going to remind Mr. Pfeffer, he's already aware, anytime a site plan application comes in front of the board, we do encourage the applicants to schedule a T R C meeting prior to the formal public hearing for the site plan.
And just a quick thought, this is going to be a net re-announced on October or announced on October 20th? Should not be carried, October 20th?
Yeah, we'll carry this to October 20th, this time without further notice at this point, even though we think the notice was deficient. But it's for purposes only to announce a formal date to which there will be notice in any event.
We should also point out, as I, as I said before, Mr. Mr. Gertner also mentioned it. You may have two cases here, depend, we don't, I have no idea what you're going to be using the, the other piece of property for. But you'll have a conditional use application for the synagogue. You may end up with a C variance required on, on the remaining house if it's going to remain as a single family home. Now you got two burdens for two different types of applications. So we want to get that resolved upfront so that we don't run into a problem later on.
Understood.
Thank you.
Well, one other question, and we're not on this one, on number four, if you, it's a use variance, if we don't have seven members, if we can just carry that, I let everybody, I have.
While you're here, it's your right, it's your right. So ladies and gentlemen who are here for application number four, Miles 2 LLC, the preliminary and final site plan 833 with use variance 3360. That married matter will be carried without the need of further notice, but to what meeting, Mr. Beporo?
And given Chairman, and I believe you have a copy as well of the next three agendas. And I'm not going to put it solely on the chairman. But look through those agendas. I mean, I, if you put it on the next meeting, we'll have to bump other applications.
Yeah, the, the next meeting has been one that's been ongoing now.
November 17?
I would say the set, we're going to be here anyway.
The Set League of Municipalities.
But we didn't cancel the meeting.
Okay, I'm just in case.
I, I think we should, for now, I think we should carry it to the 17th and see where it's at.
That's fine.
You're going to be here anyway, right? On the 17th, November 17?
I haven't seen the agenda, it might be.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, members of the public, as indicated, application number four, I lost my agenda. Miles 2 LLC, preliminary and final site plan 833, use variance 3360, shall be carried to the November 17, 2021 meeting without the need of further notice. The applicant has waived time.
Thank you very much, thank you everybody for your services.
Sorry, it projects.
We're on to number two, Joseph. And Alice. DeLuca, come on up.
So first, Mr. DeLuca, before I swear you in, appreciate you and other members of the public allowing us to do some housekeeping matters first. We appreciate that. You raise your right hand. Sir, do you sound when we swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you, first, I apologize, you're a little taller than the last folks, if you raise that mic a little bit back, you.
I do.
Give us your, thank you, your full name, spell your last and your address, please.
Joseph DeLuca, D E capital L U C A, 54 Mill Pond Road, Jackson.
So tell us a little bit about what you want to do. I understand that you generate at 10 feet from the side of the property.
Yes, I'd like to put a whole house generator in for just power backup on my residence. And the ideal place for it is to put it as close to the service entrance of both the electric and gas, which are are born both on the same side of my house. Unfortunately, on that side of my house, I don't have 20 feet to the property line, which is required by the code. I do have a 10 foot easement, which I will honor, of course. But I'm requesting the board to approve that I can put the generator at a little over 10 feet from the property line instead of the code required 20, because my house actually is only 14 feet from the property line on that side. And.
Mr. Peters, you haven't done this in a while, but I'm sure you can shake off the rust.
Sir, you've indicated that as, as you're standing on the street looking at your house, that the utility services that come into the house are on the right hand side?
That's correct.
So it's the closest location, which is probably the most efficient.
For the electric and gas, yes.
You understand that you'll need to get a building permit from the municipality?
Understood.
You'll probably have to put it on a stone pad?
Yes.
You're going to hire a licensed electrical contractor to do this work?
I am, yes.
Mr. Chairman, previously, when we heard whole house generator applications, they were use variance applications. This is not a use variance application. The planned retirement communities did not permit accessory structures. Accessory structures are permitted in the residential zone. The required setbacks are 20 feet. Here, in this case, the applicants indicated the hardship. He's got a driveway on the left, I'm sorry, sir, you have a driveway on the left hand side of your property? Make hard to put a generator in?
Yeah.
So he has a pre-existing condition on the right hand side of his property, which limits his ability to place it at the required setback. So from that perspective, I have no additional comments or questions for the witness.
Through the, through the chair. What is the, what is the law in terms of allowing it to put it within the drainage easement? Is he allowed to do that or is that prohibited?
He's not proposing to put it in the drainage easement. The drainage easement is 10 feet into his property. He's proposing the generator 10 foot, 6 inches from the property line. So it's adjacent to the drainage easement.
Mr. DeLuca, I drove by your property. It's a beautiful area, 12 cap, good sized homes, but I did not see one generator on, on the side property lines. And where I live, there are these generators, whole house generators in existence. And I got to tell you, these things are loud. So my, my, my question was, the houses, that your home and the houses on, on either side look like similar construction. I'm concerned that where you're putting your generator might be next to your neighbor's bedroom. Is it?
So there are bedrooms on the second floor of the house next to me, yes.
Is there any way, and I know it's an inconvenience, but that, that's a different issue. Why can't you put it behind the house? If I'm looking, if I'm standing on the street, looking at your home, you've got the, you have your driveway to the left here.
Yes.
Why can't you put it behind the house, on the left side of the house, on the other side of your paver patio?
So on the left side.
You're going to have to run the, it's their gas, right, natural gas.
It would be not, the natural gas line and the electric line would be a very long run from that side, which is a significant cost increase in the project, as well as I would have to tear up the ceiling in my finished basement to get it from that side over to the other side.
Did they, did they also tell you when about these generators that you have to run it once a week for about 15 minutes?
Yes.
They are pretty loud.
Yeah, so, and Mr. Hurley, in our neighborhood, we do, there are pretty significant number that are there. So I appreciate your, that you mentioned you took a look, but there's at least four to five, and they are putting them on the side, the most convenient with the, the gas and the electric. Now, my property happens to be narrow.
I mentioned only because I didn't see any on the side. So I was curious if they put them in the back, which would make sense to avoid the issue of the, you know, conflict with the bedrooms.
Understood, yes, but.
If you got this thing running and somebody is trying to sleep right next door, I can assure you, I know the generator says what the decimal level is. I can hear him a block away.
Understood, so yeah, all the installations in the neighborhood are currently on the side, but my property happens to be a slice that's more narrow than some others, where they had the 20 feet limitation. The maintenance run, as you mentioned, 15 minutes, right, you, I would be programming that as most to say at noon on a Wednesday, typically, right, so that that's not bothering anybody. And then it's only going to run in case of, of an outage, a long term outage, or would be the only overnight running of it.
If you place it where I recommended, you wouldn't need any variances and you're doing away with the problem with the noise of the neighbors.
Understood, so in the back of the house on the left side, you know, would be, as I mentioned, thousands of dollars of extra cost to install and, and tearing up the basement ceiling in that case.
Just a matter of cost versus, you know, quality of life for your neighbors and so.
Understood, and my actual bedroom is above where the proposed location is as well. So it would be something I would be sensitive to. And if it, if there was that long term of an outage, I would most likely be turning it off overnight for, for my own good as well as my neighbor's good. And I have spoken with my neighbor as well about this, you know, face to face. We've both been there 20 years and are good friends, and he did not have an issue with, with the location.
He doesn't have the house for sale, does he?
He doesn't, he does not.
I'm going to open it up to the public, anybody wants to speak for or against this application? I'm seeing anybody coming forward, I'm going to close the public session. All right, board members, we've heard the law and we have to make a decision to make a motion.
I'll move to approve the applicant's application based upon a testimony placed on the record in terms of where he's going to place it, not within the drainage easement. He did indicate he had chatted with his, his neighbor over the potential inconvenience and noise issue. And, and Evan has confirmed that it's not going to be within a drainage easement. And for those reasons, I've moved to approve the application.
We have a motion, I need a second. We have a motion and a second, roll, roll, please.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch? Mr. Hurley?
No, for the reasons I mentioned before, if we move the generator to the place recommended, there would be no variance required and for quality of life for the neighborhood, so I'm voting no.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes, you have your generac, generator.
All right, thank you for your time.
Come with the cement pad, so I have one.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Enjoy. Okay, let's see. They're waiting for me, huh? All right, Jose. Come on up, Jose.
All right.
Angeler, how do you pronounce it?
Angeles.
Angeles, like Los Angeles. Angeles, before I swear you in, I just want to make the particular, because this is particularly sensitive. You are at, you require a D2 variance. D variance requires, in this case, five affirmative votes out of six. You would have the right to have a seventh member here, if you wanted the, your case to be carried. But it's your determination whether or not you choose to move forward.
So you need another member?
We don't need another member, you may want another member because you need five votes.
Okay. I guess I do it now.
You what?
I guess if I can do it now, I do it now.
Your determination.
You're doing that?
Yes.
Okay, good, absolutely. All right, tell us what you'd like to do, I see a detached garage.
Yes, I want to do a detached garage on the back of the property. It's a 30 by 60. It will be built, I want to do the foundation with cinder block framing.
Well, wait, I didn't swear a minute.
Oh, but you did.
Did I? No.
No.
Sir, if you raise your right hand, do you sound when we swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to make before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full names and spell your last? I apologize.
My name is Jose Angeles, A N G E L E S.
So tell us about a little bit about what you're going to do with the detached garage. How big is it going to be?
It's going to be a 30 by 60.
30 by 60, why do you need it so big?
I have another property, what I have, my cars, I, I want it plain for the future, so I'm going to put it for sale next year or two. And I want to look for a home for the cars I have.
Okay, are you going to do work on those cars in there?
I don't, when I need work, I just take it to somebody and they do the work.
No commercial business is going on?
No, no.
You're going to have electricity coming out?
Yes.
Any gas?
No gas, no gas, no button.
And questions from board members?
Through the chair. Mr. Angeles, a question for you. The positioning of the, of the structure, the, the survey is, is lacking grading issues. And, and my observation of your, your property, from, from where the existing shed is, the, the, it grades drastically downward. Is, other than the structure, will you have to grade, regrade to access the building?
No, I have an access right into the left of the house, all the way to the back. If you see the, the, the survey right on the left of the house, I have a stone driveway all the way to the back.
So that, that does, you know, because where I was able to see, I couldn't see the extent of the gravel driveway, how far it went into the rear of your property.
It goes all the way right to the.
But I was concerned about the grading issues out there for you. Now, with regards to the positioning of the shed, why do you need it particularly in that specific position against the property line? You're not moving inward into the center of the property?
Because when I go right to the back, I want to have enough room so I can make the turn to put it on the garage.
Say, describe that again.
When I, the reason I want to put it right close to the other side of the property, when I come with the car, I will have, I want to have enough room so I can make the turn, so I can put it inside the garage.
So would it not help you, because so the entrance, so as you come down the gravel driveway, you'll turn right and that's the entrance into the structure, correct?
Yes.
So would it not help you to turn the entire structure so that it faces the rear of your house? So you have better access?
See that, the, the room when you put it out, it's, it's not that it's big. So that's why I wanted to see if I can put it right close to the other property. If I put it the other way, I want to get as much as I can use of my property.
Understood, so I, I don't see it on the survey, and maybe one of our professionals can help me, I don't see the width where it says lot two and lot six, I, I don't see a dimension of the width of the lot back there.
Well, it's 99 foot, 70 foot.
Ah. It's roughly 100 feet width of the property where he's proposing the shed, of the, the. Roughly a hundred feet width of the property where he's proposing the shed, of the, the structure, all right, thank you. And again, you propose to have a, a, a con, a cinder block foundation?
I wanna have like a cinder block foundation with framing and a roof on the top.
Wood framing, wood, wood?
It will be a wood framing.
And what type of, I'm sorry, what type of, of veneer and roofing type of system?
It will be, well, it's gonna be a, either two by fours or two by six with plywood and siding around, and regular standard roofing.
And how many, you're proposing three or four garage openings?
Yes.
Well, yes to three or four?
Four.
Four, okay. So you're proposing to basically store four vehicles in that, in that structure?
Yes.
That's the intended?
Yes.
Intended use, okay, thank you, Chair.
Paul? Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I, I guess I have, well, first a question for the applicant, and then a question for our council and professionals. Mr. Angeles, in, in Mr. Peter's report, and as we look at the survey, there is a depiction of your gravel driveway that's clearly not on your property. It's, it's, it's way off your property. And, and I'm wondering, from our professionals, you know, if that's not memorialized somewhere, and we're dealing with an expansion of a non-conforming use, if we end up granting him the, the variance, are we not even further increasing the expansion of a non-conforming use to the, to the detriment to his neighbor? I'm gonna defer to the engineer and to, to Mr. Peter, cuz I'm not, I'm not sure in terms of, the, yeah. If you, if you look at the, the survey that he submitted, there's a line definition, I guess they call it a block limit. Is that his property line, or is it something different, am I totally misreading it?
From the survey that was submitted, it appears that at some point in time, part of a right of way had been vacated. I can't tell from the citation how long ago it would have been.
Two years ago.
Two years ago?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Probably more than that because it's ordinance oh eight eighteen, so three.
Yeah, perfect.
So that's the additional width on the left-hand side of the property. Sir, do you own the property to the left of this?
Yes. I have my commercial business right next to it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to help the board understand what exists out in the field to determine how to address this, should they want to approve your variance?
Okay.
And perhaps put some restrictions or requirements in place so that at some point in time, if these properties, if you don't own both the properties, both owners of the property have equal rights to that gravel driveway, so.
If that ever happened, if you see the property, I will do the driveway closer to the house. I have enough room to go right into the back.
Okay, I, I think what Mr. Book was suggesting was that either you have to, if you have a driveway that's only going to serve the lot that your son lives on, then it should be on that piece of property. If you have a common driveway that you control ownership of both the lots, perhaps you could draw up an easement that says, this is a shared driveway between lot one on the left and lot one point oh one on the right, and if you sell it off to someone, or God forbid, at some point, we're all not gonna be here, some point in the future,
Yeah.
that the, the subsequent owners of the property both have rights to use that driveway equally. So I think those are the two alternatives that are easily put forth, Mr. Book.
Thank you, that would help dramatically.
Yes, that could be put into the motion, okay. James?
I have two questions, one more with respect to that. It, it appears from the survey that a portion of the property was originally part of Pinecrest Avenue that was vacated by ordinance, by the, by the municipality, which means that property owner, one property owner got half, the other property only got the other half of the road. So it looks like that, that dark line may in fact be his property line. That's, it, it's an important question. My second question is, why do you need a loft on this garage?
Well, you're gonna have a storage for, if I have a needed part, I mean, I, if I, I, I don't have to have the loft.
You already have a garage, you already have a shed. So you, you wanna add this additional garage for your antique cars for storage?
Yes.
So you don't need the loft? You don't want anybody living up there?
It won't be done, it will just be for the storage. And it won't be that big, the garage is gonna be at least eight to ten feet, I'm gonna say maybe five feet going into the peak like that, it won't be full a foot. It will be, on the side will be five feet going into the, like an A-frame.
I just have some concern about the loft, because it opens up possibilities for, you know, future use.
Mr. Hill?
So I wanna answer, or try to answer Mr. Hurley's first question, which was with, with respect to the roadway vacation of Pinecrest. This survey does depict that, that vacation was allocated to the owner of lot one point zero one. So that is part of that, that lot. And then it also depicts that the other half of that vacated right of way is dedicated to lot one, which again is under family control. With respect to the structure itself, typically structures of this size, the board has required a gutters be installed with downspouts, but also connected to a drywall, that way we're not, you're not, the stormwater runoff isn't entering your neighbor's property, so drywells. Usually you could do that on just two of them, run everything to one end. Did you indicate there's gonna be a concrete slab?
It will be concrete slab.
And what kind of utilities?
Just electric.
Electric? And you also, you, you own the property next door too, right, lot one? You own a, from what I understand, a successful painting business, and also a very good taco business as well, or I believe that's your son's.
Yes, yes.
You are. You're not proposing any commercial use within this garage?
No, I'm saying my commercial place is right next door, that's where I own my.
Right, I just wanna make sure there's no.
Yeah, well, it won't be.
Okay. That's the only questions I have.
Mr. Chairman, Chair?
Go ahead.
Mr. Angeles, one of the things that really caught my eye is the size of this. I wanna come back to the size, the thirty by sixty. That's a pretty, that's a pretty big barn, whole barn shed, whatever you're calling it for four cars. How many antique cars do you have? That's my first.
Well, the shed I have right now, and the, the other house I'm gonna put for sale, it's, it's forty-five by sixty. I have a forty-five by sixty right now.
No, no, I'm sorry, how many antique cars do you currently have?
Right now, I have four and a motorcycle.
And, and where do you keep those stored?
Right now, I have another property, I'm saying I wanna plan because I'm gonna put the, the house for sale in the next two years.
And, and each of those cars, four, that leaves you with an awful lot of extra room within, within this, within this pole barn slash garage, does it not? I mean, when I consider the widths of the four cars, what are they, approximately eight feet wide, each one of them? So maybe you're thirty-two feet to forty feet in, in need for.
Well, I figure out, each car garage is gonna be about twelve by thirty, twelve by thirty, twelve by thirty, yeah.
So it's only the cars you wanna store in this garage? Nothing else?
No, nothing else.
No tacos?
No tacos.
And I heard you're right, no basement, correct?
No basement.
All right, thank you.
Any other board members have any question? Anybody from the public, like come forward and speak on this, pose in public session? Okay, so it's left to us, we've heard the dialogue, I need a motion.
All right, well, before a motion, let's have some.
Discussion.
I, I, thank you, thank you. I, I just wanna clarify the testimony here. So the applicant owns lot one, block eighty, eighty-three oh two, which is to the west, I'll go by compass.
No, it's east.
East, I'm sorry, east, east of, of, of the applicant's property. So he owns that, and that, that is, is it zone commercially, do we know? HC, do we know the zone? Thank you, all right, so. And we've heard no objectors or anyone from, from lot ten, block eighty-four oh one, which is to the, to the right of the applicant, west of the property, all right. And we've also clarified, i- if this torso chooses, that we will put into the, the motion that this, this driveway, this gravel driveway will be established a, as a common driveway to both property accesses, both property eighty-three oh two and eighty-three oh one?
Through an easement to be approved by the board professionals.
Okay, a- and this, this, this property to, to the rear, Pinecrest Avenue, that, that's a non-issue here. It's already been.
For reasons.
No, cuz it's already been vacated.
Yeah.
So it's not a paper road, so to speak?
Well, north of it remains, because they, it doesn't look like they vacated it above, but you can tell where the line is, where that little jigger is.
For the survey, correct.
Yeah, but as Mr. Peter said, that the governing bodies made a determination to vacate the portion shown on this, sir.
All right, and with regards to the, the structure, I don't have issues, given the, given the, the location, it's close to the property line, but the hardship, I didn't really hear too much on, but I'm, I'm satisfied with that. And the structure and the usage of the structure, I'm satisfied with. And the intended use, the fact that we'll have electric only out there limits any potential habitat of the structure. And those are my comments, I, I'm not gonna place a motion, I wanna hear all the comments.
Any other discussion, James? Okay.
Other comments? I'll put forth a motion. My motion to approve the application as submitted, with the structure being a thirty by sixty, four-bay garage with electric only running to the, to the structure, located as indicated on the site plan within ten feet or at ten feet of the property line, and that the gravel driveway, which, which straddles both lot one, block eighty-three oh two and block one point oh one, block eighty-three oh one, will be, with proper terminology, an easement?
There, the cross access easement to be proffered to the board professionals and for their approval.
And I, that, there is my motion.
What about the loft, what do we do with it?
I'm not concerned about the loft, the loft, given, give, given the description and the testimony, i- it's intended for, for, for storage use, and again, the fact that electric only, I don't think it's inhabitable. I, I don't, we didn't hear testimony as to access to the loft, but it's a leave for that. But I have no issues with the loft, all right.
And just as a, if I may, just to amend, you may have said it, I'm sorry, but no commercial use, and it's just storage of his, of his antique cars and what's associated to those antique.
Thank you, I did not, thank you, that's a nice amendment, and, and that's the motion.
James? No sanitary, no bathrooms.
Nope.
Okay, so we got a motions on the floor. I need a second.
One second.
Motion and a second roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Fritsch?
Yes.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Mr. Najarian?
Yes, you have your, we're out.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy, enjoy.
Have a good night.
Continue making those promises.
Yes.
Yes. There you are, yes.
Thank you.
That's a goldmine.
You can own all of Jack's, you keep it up.
Thank you, guys, you guys, good night, thank you.
You wanna take a break, a five-minute break?
Set up, yeah, sure. Ten after eight.
Ten after eight, you think?
I don't know, but you wanna take a break, so ten after eight.
No?
Ten, five-minute break, ten after eight. That's what you said. Ronco.
Paul Verbel.
That's it. Yeah, name. So Mr. Mayor Bellish, Sean Greer, the board's attorney, we had a discussion off the record, after you do a brief introduction, and we swear your client in, I'm gonna ask for making some connection between the, he as an individual and the applicant, because we have some concern, obviously, that there's a beneficial interest in the, in the application. So, if, if I.
No problem.
If I may swear. Sir, if you raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
You gotta turn the mic on.
Yes, I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your, and, and then through the chairman and through your attorney, your relationship to Ronco Developers, Inc.?
Ron Koenig, K-O-E-N-I-G, I'm the president and the only shareholder of Ronco Developers, Inc.
Okay, so the, the questions come before the board, but the application is made by the development company, which you testified you were the sole shareholder, yet the contract presented before the board is in your name personally. Do you understand that?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So Ron, why don't you speak to the board about your connection and what your intention was, and what you're willing to do to potentially correct this little inconsistency?
Okay, it should have said Ronco Developers, Inc. on the con, on the contract and the application. And basically, I will, there's a clause in there that I can correct, correct it to Ronco Developers, Inc., which I'm willing to do as a condition.
Ron, isn't it true that there's a provision in the contract that provides that it's Ronco Developers, Inc., it's actually gonna be filing the variance application, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and, and now looking back, you believe that the fact that your name was put individually on the contract was probably an oversight on your part, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, and to correct that oversight, you'll agree to, as any condition of approval, if we get an approval tonight, that you'll provide the board with an assignment of the contract from you individually to Ronco Developers, Inc.?
Yes, I will.
Anything further on that?
Mr. Chairman, respectfully, I, I've no, you know, so long as that, should the board approve it, that'd be a condition of approval. I have no issue in the jurisdictional question of the beneficial interest of this applicant moving forward. He's represented by, by council, as a corporation would have to be, both council and the applicant, and the applicant as an individual, and as the president and sole, sole shareholder of the corporation have made those representations.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is an undersized line for what to build a single-family home? That's correct.
Well, I'll tell you what, Mr. Chairman, I think the better way to handle this respectfully is, Mr. McFarland has walked up, is gonna raise his right hand, who's an engineer planner. Mr. 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 McFarland, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. For the record, Graham McFarland, professional engineer, professional planner, previously appeared before this board many times.
Well, it's up to you if you want more. He has.
Anthony, can you get the other?
Mr. Mayor Bell, can you give us your full name, spell your last, as well, we had some problems here.
My apologies.
Sure, it's Paul Mirabelli, M-I-R-A-B-E-L-L-I. My office is at thirty-four hundred Highway Thirty-five, Suite Four, in Hazlet, New Jersey.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the application tonight is for the approval to construct a single-family house on an isolated undersized lot known as Block 11404, Lot 77. The subject property is located on Willie's Lane. Willie's Lane sits off of Perrineville Road between Perrineville and Route 571 in the Cassville section, section of town. Willie's Lane is a, is a public street with a fifty-foot right-of-way. It is improved with a fifteen or sixteen-foot cartway, so it is very rural in nature. The, the street does contain seven or eight existing homes, a little, little older in their, in their age. Again, th- this area is very, you know, is still very rural in, in, in nature. The subject lot has an area of about a half an acre, so we are seeking relief for, for lot width and lot area as, as outlined in, in the, in the planner's report. You can see Exhibit A1, which is the, the variance plan that we submitted. It does show the subject lot, it shows the proposed home, which has a floor area of about twenty, I think it's twenty-one hundred square feet, let me get the number. Yeah, it has a floor area of two thousand fifty-seven square feet. It's a four-bedroom, two-story home of colonial architecture style. It does have a basement and a, and a one-car garage. The lot will be served by, by septic and well, as there, there's no public water nor public sewer in in the vicinity of the, of the project. We did, did take a look at the, at the surrounding neighborhood. I took a, took a look at the lots that are developed on Willie's Lane and the four nearest lots that are also developed on Perrineville Road. There were a total of I think there were a total of eleven houses within the vicinity of the project. The smallest house was about thirteen hundred square feet, again, from, from looking at tax records. The largest house was about twenty-two hundred and twenty-eight square feet is what the tax records showed. Again, this house is proposed at two thousand fifty-seven square feet, so I believe that our proposal to build a single-family house of four bedrooms with, with basement and one-car garage, having a living area of two thousand fifty-seven square feet is consistent with the development pattern in the, in the neighborhood. As to the, as to the merits of the application related to the undersized lot, the existing lot is a hundred feet by, by two hu- by two hundred feet, located in the, in the R1 zone. Minimum lot size required is, is, is one acre. We did send letters to the, to the three adjoining property owners, which are Lots Seventy-Five, Seventy-Six, and Seventy-Eight. There is no, no remedy that's available to the applicant to bring these lots, or to bring this lot into, into more conformance with, with the zoning criteria, so that provides justification for, for the relief. This, this proposal to construct the house in a location that does not ask for any other variances also complies with the, with the standards and the court, court cases that have, that have proven the applicability of, of what's known as the Downmire variance related to isolated, isolated undersized lots. Anthony, if you could just go to, go to A2 next. So the, the next exhibit is, is a floor plan of the floor plans of the house. You can see the basement plan, the first floor plan, and the second floor plan. Again, one, one-car garage, four bedrooms proposed, and two thousand fifty-seven square feet. The overall footprint is, is about forty, forty-three by thirty-three, something, something on that order. So again, I believe that's, that's in keeping in character with the development pattern of the neighborhood. You can go to the next, next exhibit, please. Next exhibit is A3, that just shows the, the building elevations. You can see the front elevation, the rear elevation, and then, then the two sides. You can see the colonial-style architecture with, with gable end roofs, again, keeping in style with the development pattern of the neighborhood. And finally, if you can just go to A4. The next sheet is just the, the survey that, that was, that was performed. We did not submit this separately to the board when we made the application, which we certainly shouldn't, should have done. And Anthony, maybe you can scroll up a little bit. I just wanted to show, show the board that, of course, you know, we did have a survey performed, our office didn't do it, but this shows the, shows the condition of the, of the lot, and is, is a survey done by, done by Valley Survey. As to some of the technical comments in, in Ernie's letter, he did identify, raised some questions related to the condition of the, of the street that, that the, that the lot fronts on. As I did touch on, Willie's Lane is a public street, it's fifty-foot right-of-way. It has an improved width of fifteen or sixteen feet. So it certainly does not meet, does not meet current development standards. We are requesting a waiver from having to improve the road in any fashion. Our opinion is that the widening of this road, or the improvement of this road, you know, would not provide any benefit to the municipality in, in any fashion. The, the balance of Willie's Lane from Perrineville Road to its terminus is improved in the same fashion. There are, there are two other streets in this immediate vicinity that are also improved in this, in this same fashion. So again, I don't believe there's any benefit to, to providing additional pavement just to increase runoff. And again, I don't, I don't believe there's any benefit to, to improving that, that street. I guess my first question is, it would be obvious that Mr. Koenig's not building the house for himself, he's building it for sale, correct?
That's correct.
So a subsequent purchaser of a, of a home on this lot perhaps needs to be notified that they're buying a house on a street that's fifteen feet wide, that doesn't meet the township or RSIS requirements, lest they think that somehow the municipality, we have a variance application before us on a substandard street, we're saying it's not going to serve a purpose. Well, I'm going to play Township Engineer for a minute, and say, when the new owner of this property comes out and says, I can't drive two vehicles down this street, and I pay taxes, why don't you widen the street? I guess one of two things, either widen the road, or perhaps put something in the contract of sale that says it's a fifteen or sixteen-foot wide road, which received variance approval with the understanding the municipality has no capital improvement program in place to widen the road. I don't think, I don't think we have any objection to putting that condition in any contract of sale, or in, or in, you know, in a deed.
The applicant would agree to that as a condition, to put some kind of restriction in either the contract of sale, or if they wanted something that had to be recorded, some type of deed restriction. Or deed notice, I think is more, more, right terminology.
Through the chair? I, I would like to chew on this just a little bit more. That road is awfully narrow. How long is the, how long is that road? Does anybody know? Oh, past. To the, to his property and then past.
I can tell you that in, in total, the road is about seven hundred to seven hundred and fifty feet long.
So, to, to the, to the professionals, I mean, there's a part of me, I'd like to see that road improved, period. I'd like to see it be brought up to standard, only I don't know about a hundred percent, but I would like some feedback in terms of, is that something that is, that is sometimes conditioned upon these types of applications? I can't say that I've seen it before, but I want to know if I'm way out of bounds, and even, and even thinking about imposing that type of a condition on, on a house that's being built on spec by a builder doing an investment, just.
Well, that, that part of it's not, is not relevant to the, to the analysis. The issue is whether or not, as a condition of approval, you need to, you have to grant this waiver.
Sorry?
Well, I was.
So I would, I would draw my question in regards to, you know.
Well, just relating it, I apologize, just relating it to the economics, but the issue is whether or not, there's, there's a waiver request for that, so.
And again, perhaps this is more of a discussion that would include Graham. This is a platted lot, the lot exists, someone's paying taxes on it. So at some point in time, municipality found it proper to build a half-acre lot on a fifty-foot right-of-way, and at some point in time, municipality allowed people to build houses on it, which included a fifteen or sixteen-foot wide road. That being said, this applicant's here for a variance. I am not a hundred percent sure that under our land use code, that he'd be required to put frontage improvements or curb and sidewalk in, because he's not creating a lot. He's asking for a variance for an undersized lot. The lot already exists, so to speak. However, I do think that the applicant, and I think Graham started that testimony, needs to prove to the reasonable satisfaction of the board that this somewhat substandard road is sufficient and/or safe. And I'm sure Graham would like to say this, I'll cut him off. It already exists with, I can't remember if it's six or seven houses that are on it. So I'm not sure from a legal perspective how much we can beat the applicant over the head about roadway improvements, because even if we asked him just to widen his frontage of the property, I'm not sure we would be within our jurisdiction to ask him to do off-track improvements for an undersized lot variance. And I'll stand corrected by anyone who wants to join the conversation, I'll just put that out there first.
Just a quick question, legal question. Can we not, as a condition, grant the variances on the condition that the applicant grant an easement for future roadlining?
That.
He doesn't need a right-of-way.
Yeah, the right-of-ways.
On his property. So it's fifty, it's a fifty-foot wide right-of-way? Okay.
Yes, it's a fifty-foot wide, fifty-foot wide right-of-way. Existing fifty-foot right-of-way, correct.
Are there sidewalks of those seven houses that are existing?
There are currently no curb and or sidewalks along Willie's Lane. Just, just to jump in, the, the discussion of curb and sidewalk is a little more black and white in, in this town. The ordinance is clear that it requires curb and sidewalk or contribution to the, to the pedestrian safety fund, so you know, we would defer to the, to the pleasure of the board. Of course, I'd argue that there's no sense to putting curb in if you're going to put it at a, you know, on a fifty-foot wide road. So, and this application needs to be more sensible, just to make the contribution. And as Mr. Hill just testified, there's no other sidewalk within the vicinity, within the vicinity of, of this particular lot.
Are there any other waivers that you were going to be discussing?
I think I think those are, I think those are the only two. Pretty sure those are the only two, unless something else happens to.
I guess, Mr. McFarland, back to you, just so I can have it clear in my mind, and Ernie as well. Ernie, you're saying there already is a fifty-foot road right-of-way that applies to this particular road?
Currently, Willie's Lane is a platted fifty-foot wide right-of-way. Within that fifty feet, someone didn't get around to building a thirty-foot wide road. They built a fifteen or sixteen-foot wide road.
So just, just play that out for me. The implications of that are, at any time in the future, should the township wish to come in, they can, they can.
The township has plenty of right-of-way to install roadway improvements, to bring this, to bring this up to a municipal standard without the need to acquire property from any property owners along Willie Lane.
Up to the fifty feet.
Yes. And I, I don't know the exact timeframe, but the township did pave these streets at Perrineville Road, I'm going to say, in, probably in the last six or seven years. For a long time, these, these streets were, were just dirt roads. So the township did pave these roads, Willie's Lane, Oakleaf, and Pine Street, and Perrineville, in the last few years, and they paved it to the width at which they now exist. So the township certainly had the opportunity to improve the roads to their own standards, but they chose not to. Yes, it just, to the best of my knowledge, there's no current capital improvement plan to improve Willie's Lane. I will put on the record, as testimony, that across the intersection from Willie's Lane and Perrineville Road are going to be five hundred and fifty residential units on a project known as Jackson Park North. And that application has a responsibility to reconstruct and/or repave Perrineville Road from through this intersection with Willie's Lane to a certain design standard. So Perrineville Road's going to get improved in the next, say, five years. I can't imagine the town's going to come in while a road's under construction and improve a side street until the main road's finished. Which is the reason I wanted to make sure that the board asked the applicant to put in a deed that the successor in title understands they're buying something that's somewhat deficient according to certain standards. That way, when they come to Town Hall yelling and screaming, you were told that this is how Willie's Lane's been. It's not as though the town's ignoring what's going on out there. That's what the applicant asked for. If the board acts affirmatively, that's what was approved. And then subsequently, if they want to come in and ask the town to do it, the town can prioritize it as part of a road improvement program.
May I ask a question to be somewhat contrarian, put it out? While I agree that there's no basis to have the applicant, even if approving the request, to make off-site improvements, in theory, they, they could be asked to curb at the fifty-foot right-of-way, as an example, so that there would be a demarcation, right, it may look odd.
I, I, I would, I would stop you, Mr. Attorney, from playing engineer for a second, and tell you that there's, there's no reasonable, if you asked this applicant to put the curb line where a compliant road would be, it would be five or eight feet off the existing edge of pavement. The town has no reason to come in and build a thirty-foot wide road for eight houses, which is not cost-efficient. The town will come in, they'll maintain the road. When they come in and maintain the road, they may widen the edges every couple of years, and at some point, it'll be an eighteen or twenty-foot wide road, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't build a thirty-foot wide piece of curb on one piece of property.
So I appreciate that, that's why it's called laying foundation. So it's your planning opinion that, in fact, the deed restriction alternative is sufficient?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, James. This is a question for our attorney, and maybe for applicant's attorney, probably for our experts, too. Because there are only seven lots along Willie's Lane, could not the municipality, at some future time, and this is for purposes of notice, do a special assessment to improve that lot for seven homes? I don't remember, yeah, to improve, I'm sorry, to improve the road for the, just those seven homes? I don't remember. Yeah, to improve, I'm sorry, to improve the road for just those seven homes. And if it can, why don't we just ask the applicant to put that notice in, in the deed, that it may be subject to special assessment, so they know.
So I have never, in my experience, seen a special in set, assessment for roadway. I've seen it for curb and I've seen it for a sidewalk. In theory, at this point, the, my understanding of the legislative history for the reason for the pedestrian safety fund ordinance is to avoid the necessity of special assessments, but in fact, to have a fund from which to draw. That's a roundabout way to say, I'm not sure that normally roadway improvements are just, it's a benefit in theory to the entire town and they eat it in a bond.
Ernie, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I know it's the last application. We all have nothing else to do except to home watch baseball. But when we talk about roadway trust funds, asking the developer to put forward a certain amount of money into a fund, assuming that the town's going to build a conforming road. Normally that legislation includes a sunset clause, says the town doesn't do it within a certain period of time, you get the money back. Now the town's in a position where they say, okay, I'm going to make a number up here. We take $5,000 from this applicant and we put it aside for Willie's Lane. Well, I don't know if there's any more vacant lots on Willie's Lane. So now the town, if they want to widen seven other pieces of property, have $5,000 to do it with. Another problem that often happens is that it gets put into a roadway trust fund. The town, depending upon how they described the proposed use of the roadway trust fund, says, you know what? We widened a road over on the east side of town. This guy comes back in 10 years, says, I waited 10 years, I want my $5,000 back. Oh, we widened something over by St. Al's Church. Wait, I put $5,000 up to widen Willie's Lane. So creating a roadway trust fund while a prudent planning idea doesn't often yield the results we're looking for unless you take an area of what we used to refer to as newspaper lots. A section of town that hasn't been developed. And roadways have to be built in order for the lots to be developed. So in this particular case, I just don't think there's a reasonable expectation that other than this lot, there'll be additional development potential for Willie's Lane.
Thank you for that clarification. Let's move forward. Continue with your.
Yes, I, so I believe I've addressed the comments as outlined in Ernie's letter. And just to, to the engineering review letter, Evan points out some, some technical comments, indicates that we need soil conservation district approval, you know, for the construction of the home. We acknowledge that we'll, we'll agree to address, to address his comments. He does raise a comment about off street parking. And just for the record, this home does have a one car garage and a driveway. The house is set back about 70 feet from the street. So that will provide room for four parking spaces, which satisfies RSIS parking, parking requirements. That's all that the applicant is proposing to build. There are many homes in this area that don't have any garages. So we felt that a one, one car garage was keeping in character with, with the neighborhood. With the, with the, with the long driveway, we believe it still provides adequate parking and satisfies RSIS requirements.
However, I think, well, if I may, I think through, through the chair, that question ultimately been sworn is really better for the applicant to answer. It's his determination more aesthetic and designer-y and since he's building it on, you know, it is, the lady's on spec. So.
Yes. Yes, the reason for the one car garage is I was trying to keep the character of the neighborhood. And if I put another garage on, I don't know if I'd be needing more variances. Which I, Graham can answer that, I don't know. But I was trying to keep in character with the homes in the neighborhood.
I can just give you a, give you a tabulation real, real quick. Again, I did look at all the lots on Willie's and four lots on Perrineville. So on Willie's Lane, you have lots, lot 76 is undersized 0.8 acres. Lot 78 is 0.5 acres. Lot 79, 0.5 acres. Lot 80 does comply 1.13 acres. Lot 81, 0.69. Lot 85, 0.43 acres. So all the lots on Willie's Lane, except for lot 80 are, are undersized. I don't know the answer to that question. I know there's one or two of them that don't have any garage. I know that from, from driving down the street a couple of times. But I don't, I can't specifically answer your question. It'll be standard size. The, the disposal bed will probably be on the order of 1,800 square feet, something like that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for clarification, very openly, Mr. Hill's lead in. As you know, the board sometimes talks about on undersized lots, particularly need or desire to protect the ecosystem, the putting in the nitrate systems. Any thoughts on, from our own engineer first?
So, yeah, this, this board has on undersized lots. And not so much ones that are currently existing, but those that are being created for the zone. So if a developer is proposing a subdivision of one acre lots, but it's an R3 zone, the board has asked that alternative treatment be utilized for the septic system. When an existing undersized lot surrounded by six or seven other lots of similar size and their septic systems being much older than, than the newer technology that we, that we designed to. You know, from my standpoint, I'm not quite certain there would be an advantage on a single lot basis like this for an alternative septic system from a pragmatic perspective. But it's certainly within your purview to ask for if, if you think, if you think it's necessary. I would not think it would be necessary in a single lot like this, surrounded by other septics of older age. The newer septic, the way these conventional septics are designed nowadays, they're much better than what they were 20, 30 years ago.
Yes, James. Just one question. There was testimony that letters went out to the adjoining property owners. And then the response was there is no remedy available. Were there any responses from any of the neighbors?
The only response was one of the neighbors wanted him to buy his property, the whole property, for over $500,000, which really doesn't assist our application at all. No one was offering to sell any portion of their property to help him because it would have made their lots, you know, more undersized than they are now.
Can I ask the applicant then, since the offer was to buy the adjoining property for $500,000, what are you, what, what do you think this house would sell for? What's the market value of homes in that area? Any idea?
Currently, I don't have an answer to that. I can't give you an accurate answer. Today's market.
So you don't know what you would sell this house for?
Oh, what I'm going to sell it for, I don't know, because it could be constructed in a year or two. I couldn't tell you at this particular moment.
So we don't know $500,000 is a reasonable number and unreasonable number?
I don't know.
Through the chair, thank you. Mr. McFarland, I, I've heard what Mr. Hill said about the systems. However, the, I can say at least for myself, and looking back over applications that I've reviewed, where it comes to the standard or traditional septic system versus the nitrate systems. I, I have a distinct preference because of the ecological impact of the standard systems, to avoid the standard systems as much as I possibly can. And I like to see those nitrate systems put in. Practical is one thing, I get it, under certain circumstances. But, you know, absence some true science, true science to the contrary, that the, that a standard system would be equal to or better than a nitrate system in this situation. My default position is to go to the nitrate system. I would, I would like to, I'd be curious to know if your client will agree to putting in a nitrate system as opposed to the standard system.
Well, the, I, I agree with Mr. Gertner's representation that the board has typically required those where, where lots are being created undersized. I believe Sean said, or maybe Evan confirmed, Evan said it. So that has been my experience with this particular board, that that's where that has been satisfied. I agree with Mr. Hill's representation that there's a, there's, there's such a small, if, if any, benefit to providing it for one system in this particular, in this particular setting. I also understand that ultimately it's up to the board. It's not, it's not up to me to decide. The board gets to vote. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think there's any, any, any true benefit to it for one single lot. But it's up to the board to offer that as a condition.
Understood. Thank you.
So there's going to be a basement?
Yes.
You haven't done the bore holes on the ground?
We did, we did a test pit.
Okay. What are they? What's the water there?
We did a test pit and the water table was at about elevation 113. And we have the basement, no, it's not. 131, I'm sorry, 131. And we had the basement at 133. So the basement is two feet above the season line.
So through the chairman, regarding that basement, again, there's no architect here, but we can rely certainly on the applicant. And this is the best of his ability, assistance of Mr. McFarland. Is there plans to have a separate entrance to this base?
There is not.
What are the proposed uses of the base?
As, as of right now, the basement is unfinished. The applicant would retain the rights to, to, to improve the basement in accordance with the, with the building code as any other single family house has a right to do.
You're going to have rough plumbing for a bathroom?
It's not included in the architectural plans at this time.
I don't know if there's any follow up.
Any questions around that basement issue?
Not for me.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Continue with your.
And, and just, just to, just to close, I just indicate that we'll comply with the technical comments in Mr. Hill's review letter.
Do you agree with everything we stated?
Yes, I do.
And you agree with everything that Ernie had referenced, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Anything else on the board, any questions? You spoke of the presentation. I don't see anybody in the audience proposing.
Well, you got to open it first, just to, even if you can just go ahead and close it. You have to open it.
I opened it.
Seeing so many, I apologize. It's my job a little bit. The app, the chairman signaled members of the public coming forward as close the public portion.
Through the chair?
Go ahead. Now you're on.
Frank, a question for you, Frank, with regards to Willie's Lane, the delineation of lane. What is a lane? By definition? Or common law, what, what's?
Well, I guess you'd have to look at what documentation. Under New Jersey residential side improvement standards, they classify a lane as a rural lane. Less than, let's say, 200 cars a day is that's their limit. So that's equivalent to maybe about 20 homes, here or take. Here we got six or seven, so we're well under that threshold. They also suggest for a rural lane to be about 18 feet wide under RSIS. So this is about 15, maybe 16. So it's very close to it. But from a practical side, from what I can see on the plan and hearing it, it's basically level and straight. And there's probably some grass areas on either side. So there's that ability to kind of bypass another car, if you will. But if there's been six or seven homes already using that street without any great difficulty, I don't know if the one additional home is going to create that much more. So on the practical side, it's kind of been operating like this. And it really doesn't go to the level of requiring from a traffic volume perspective, you know, that improvement. I don't know if that.
Thank you.
Anything else, Steve?
Uh, no, I'll, I'll back at this moment. There's a further discussion.
They finished their presentation, so.
Is it to the board?
I'm bringing it to the board.
Well, do you have any?
Any closings?
Just for all the reasons, we've already stated, we think this is a, fits into the character of the neighborhood. We're, we're asking for basically two variances, which are existing conditions. We are asking for the waiver for the sidewalk and curb, that we're willing to make a contribution. I believe it's called the pedestrian safety fund. And we don't see any reason why you would grant a waiver for the fact that it's only a 15 or 16 foot wide road. I think all the professionals are in agreement. Number one, the town just recently, recently last five or six years chose when they paved it, only make it that wide. And I don't see any reason why we would want to just have our applicant just widen frontage in front of his house, but look right and maybe create a dangerous situation if you have just frontage on one house that has a little wider road. So I don't see any reason why you wouldn't grant that way.
Okay. Thank you. Well, the board.
Through the chair. With regards to the, the pedestrian safety rule, I, I don't see a need. I think the aesthetics of the neighborhood dictate in this, in this manner, that we should not require curbs and sidewalks in the area. It would change the character of Willie's Lane, basically. It's, it's, it's almost like a private road. It is only 15 feet wide, but it brings character to the area. So I think that requiring that sidewalk and curb would infringe on that, the, the character of the neighborhood. I have no objections to the other two variances being sought. Question was raised about the septic system. As per our professional, our engineers' testimony. Well, let me, Carl, I just want to clarify your concerns in this area. With regards to a regular septic system as opposed to the nit, nitric. We've heard testimony that it really, not required because it's not a new lot, but in logistics of it, a standard system is somewhat compatible to the.
Well, it's, it's, my take on it is thus. We're not, we're not being, we're not being taught, so to speak, or we're not receiving testimony on all of the distinctive differences between the better improved traditional system versus the nitrate system. We're taking it on testimony, Mr. Hill and I, Mr. McFarland, that they both acknowledged, at least by my interpretation of their testimony, that the nitrate system is better than the traditional system, although they're, they're quantifying it with a, with a a less than quantifiable term. It's more of a subjective term. It's a little better, but how much better? It's not so much better that it, it's practical to do it. Well, I'm not convinced by, by, by that, in all due respect to, to our professionals and to Mr. McFarland. I like to err in a sign of a better ecological system, of, of eliminating the nitrates. I don't know what's going on under the ground. I heard about the, the, you know, the, the water level and everything else. But still, in my mind, unless I hear compelling testimony to the contrary, that the nitrate system isn't needed, that the traditional system that's going to go in is just as good as better, and I hear the testimony, then I, I, I want the nitrate system. I want the better system in my town. I want the better system for the public good in the town. And that's, that's where I'm coming from on the nitrate system. And that's why I feel that way.
Understood. Mr. Hill? So again, your, your comments were, well, can we answer the comparison?
There is no analytical data in front of us with respect to this application of whether or not a alternative treatment system, or to what degree an alternative system would differ from a conventional. So that, that's just information we don't have in front of us. Now, the alternative treatment systems are specific to the pine lands and in areas where, in the pine lands essentially, right? They can be used in other areas of the state. Historically though, it's a pine lands model and it's for lots of one acre or less. This property's not in the pine lands. Really, this is, this is what the board has to decide.
Really, this is, this is what the board has to decide. In my opinion, a, a alternative treatment system on an undersized lot would provide better treatment of the effluent prior to it being disposed into groundwater. That's a fact, but I can't quantify to what extent, because those model, that information hasn't been provided. And it's not something I can, it's not something you can just pull out of a book. It's, it's calculations that have to be performed. So to Mr. Book's point, an alternative treatment system would provide a reduced nitrate loading as opposed to a conventional system. That's a fact.
Okay. I like that fact.
Well, it's a fact.
May I follow up? Is there any additional maintenance required?
Yes. They are, they require much more maintenance, and there's.
They being nitrate?
The, the, the alternative systems. A lot of them work on certain types of filters, filtering systems. So those filters have to be removed and maintain, I'm sorry, maintained and replaced pretty much on an annual basis. And if they're not done, then the whole point of the system kind of goes away. Now, the, the, the pinlands requires homeowners with alternative systems to report that maintenance. We're not in the pinlands, there's no reporting mechanism here, so it's a good faith, just as if you own a septic system, you should pump it at least once every two years. Well, it's a good faith that you're going to be doing that. Look, an alternative treatment system costs about, on average, about $10,000 to $12,000 more for the lot, or for a single house like this, and it requires annual maintenance and maintenance costs associated with that. Right? So that's really the difference between the alternative system versus the conventional system. I can tell you if this was a one-acre lot anywhere else through the town, or a one-acre lot or higher, or anywhere else through the town, the County Board of Health and the New Jersey DEP does not require an alternative system by state regs. It's really confined to the pinlands. We've tended to adopt a pinlands model on, like I said earlier, on newer subdivisions where the lots are smaller than what the zone requires, three acres versus one. I think that's a smart planning, a smart planning move, and it makes some engineering sense to me also. But obviously, if you think it's, it would be better than a conventional system, but I can't quantify to what degree.
Yes.
Building the house for sale, and the cost of that, better penetration, that's long to the purchaser?
I would think, I would, I would think so. I would think so, yes. I think that all comes into whatever sales price that would be, or goes into the ultimate of the sales price.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, being that you're stating it is better than the campaign contract, you're stating it is better, and it would be better for our town as a whole to have those type of systems, wouldn't it make more sense to have that as an requirement, because in his case, there are some where it's not like easily going to, I mean, but he's going to be that much sale?
Well, that piece of it's not necessarily relevant, but what is relevant is that it's an undersized lot, although not quantifiable, it, there's clear testimony that it's a, that it's a better, a better system. There was testimony about the higher maintenance. Of course, you're already, from one perspective, the board, it seems like if the board were to vote to approve, and we all know the Dahlmeier criteria, if the board were to approve, there's going to be other conditions of disclosure. So it's certainly the case that if the board were to find that on this undersized lot in this somewhat rural area, where all the other lots are undersized with older septic systems, this particular property would prop, would in all likelihood be better served with a better system, it would be the burden of the applicant to train and inform the, whomever owns the house, whether he decides ultimately to live there himself or not, quite frankly, to utilize that system if the board were to find such.
What are we doing for the well? Are we going to have a water softener system doing in? Do you look at that?
Well, that, that'll be determined when the well test is done, the data provided to the health department.
Jackson got a lot of line. All right. Anything else?
So just to, just to follow up in this deliberative process, similar to Mr. Costanzo, I don't have any problem with the, with the two variances the applicant is requesting. I really don't have any problem with the waiver of the sidewalk, and I don't have any problem with the waiver of the roadway thing, although I do, I do would like that deed referencing that was spoken of, so as to advise and confirm that perhaps sometime in the future, that road may be wider, and future purchasers would know about it. I also, I think Mr. McFarland said, there's no separate entrance contemplated for the basement, currently contemplated to be unfinished. And, and with that, I would look favorably on that, but for me, the nitrate system would also be something I'd be looking for as a condition to approve.
James?
I agree wholeheartedly with Mr. Book on the nitrate system. My question really is, if we, if we impose that as a condition, I guess it's a question for our attorney, is it sustainable? Does the Ocean County, the Ocean County Health Department have anything to do with this? In other words, if, can they say, you don't need it, so we're just going to give you a permit for something else, contrary to the subject?
Jumping out, I think if you, if it was a condition of approval for an undersized lot, that condition of approval would carry to the, to the Board of Health.
Correct. That's correct. And just for the, a little bit of history with the board, the zoning office and I have been taking a much more proactive approach in reviewing septic approvals as they come back from the health department, because there's been, I don't know, a handful of cases over this past year where we might approve a 13-bedroom home, but the septic system design was approved for six, because they didn't think about finishing the basement off when they designed the septic. So we are, I can say Jeff and I are much more active in these, and as a condition of any resolution of approval, I not only need to see the Board of Health approval, but I need to see the approved plans as well. And we've been, we've been implementing that policy over the last several months now. But to answer your question, Mr. Hurley, if the board imposes a condition that it's an alternative septic system, they could go get their Board of Health approval without one, but we wouldn't release the zoning permit and building permit as a result.
It's my opinion, of course, subject to possible appeal, I guess, but it's my opinion that the, that the record is sufficiently made to support the imposition of the nitrate system. I think there's testimony that there are several undersized lots. It's, it's, you can take quasi judicial notice of the, of the properties on these undersized lots being on wells with older systems. It's a protection of, it's for the health and safety and protection of the public, and I'm hopeful that Mr. McFarland, by raising his hand, is going to say they accede to it.
If I, if I can, the Board of Health has recently started asking for copies of resolutions. When we submit septic designs for approval, they ask for copies of resolutions so they can follow up on this particular issue. Because we've had applications where the nitrate system is a condition of the approval, the Board of Health wants confirmation that either it is or is not. So recently, they've been asking for resolution copies with the application for the septic system approval.
An answer to my question as to whether or not it's sustainable, can we ask the applicant if they agree?
We tried, and I just tried again. Does the applicant agree, or you're just going to leave it to the board? Makes it easy. Thank you.
All right. So anybody else want to make a closing statement? Okay, not seeing anybody. I'd like a motion and a second on this.
I'll move to approve the applicant's application for the variance requested. I'm not going to interrogate all of the conditions that were previously put on the record and deliberations, and of course, it's not placed on the record if the applicant agrees for the nitrate system, but that I move to approve the application.
I'll second it. We got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Book?
Yes.
Ms. Rich?
Yeah.
Mr. Hurley?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yeah.
Mr. Costanzo?
Yes.
Ms. Najarion?
Yes. Joy building yet?
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, I'd like to pose.
Join.
Join.
All in favor?
All in favor.
All right.
You never got to. All right. So anybody else want to make a closing statement?